Morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's October the 19th, and I'd like to call this Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to order. We'll begin this morning with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
So we have a minister coming forward to give us our invocation this morning. Thank you very much.
Peter Ernst from Family Bible Church, Kingman. Father God, we come to you thankful today for this new day. We are fearfully and wonderfully made, and that our Spirit knows very well. Thank you for this great land that you've given us the privilege to live in. We know that to whom much is given, much is required. And so, Father, we pray for these elected officials before us today, that you give them wisdom in deliberating and making decisions that will affect ultimately all of us in Mojave County. Thank you for this great land. Thank you for the freedoms and the liberties that we've enjoyed for over 200 years. We ask, O God, your protection upon us as a people. We pray, Lord, that you would help us through these difficult days, especially prior to this election on November 3rd, that there would be honesty and integrity, God, that we would seek your face, and that, Lord, you would help us to repent from an attitude of keeping you from our government, from our schoolhouse, from our White House, to the justice courts, to the homes and businesses of our great communities across this land. Thank you again for freedom. Thank you, God, for this great land, and we ask your blessing upon it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Board of Supervisors, may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 3843103A3 and 4. Madam Clerk, do we have Supervisor Johnson on the phone?
Supervisor Johnson, are you there?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held November the 2nd, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 and 4 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterical.
All moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiving and reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
So moved.
Clerk.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Official business to come before the board. First off, discussion on pending contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esplin, do you have anything?
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Okay, next will be committee and/or legislative reports, starting with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have anything? Okay, Supervisor Gold?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Angus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As some of you may or may not know, I've been working with West Care Arizona, the state, our delegation towards opening up a 16-bed, all-women residential drug treatment center in Bullhead City. It's been over four years, and we did have our ribbon cutting back in April, but because of COVID, things kind of slowed down a bit, but it has opened, and I'm proud to say that our first graduate completed her 28-day treatment. And there is now a place, if anybody needs help, knows someone, a family member who needs help, please contact either your doctor, Social Services, West Care Arizona. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're working on a number of water issues this week. Walupi settlement for their negotiations on 4,000 acre-feet of Colorado River water. We're having today a presentation of the USGS on the Walupi aquifer, and we're also having meetings on the Colorado River transfer to Queen Creek. So hopefully I'll have some good news for us at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I can attest to the fact that you and I have both been on several Zoom meetings and conference calls in regards to the Walupi water settlement and other water issues throughout Mojave County. So I'd like to report that Thursday, public fiduciary Carol Collins and I met with the Northern Arizona Missing in America Project Director in Kingman. Their purpose is to locate, identify, and intern the unclaimed cremated remains of American veterans through the joint efforts of private and government organizations. They provide honor and respect to those who have served this country by securing final resting place for our forgotten heroes. So the following morning, Carol and I both joined the Patriot Guard riders to provide a military-type escort for the remains of 34 of these indigent and unclaimed veterans from Bullhead City to the Arizona Veterans Memorial Cemetery, up in Camp Navajo, which is in Belmont between Williams and Flagstaff. Very emotional time, very respectful, very honored to have done this, and I just wanted to thank Carol publicly for inviting me to go with her and to honor these veterans. So that is my report. County Manager, do you have a report?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Yes, I do. Brief one, and it is to highlight county employees' dedication, not just through efficiencies and great customer service, but also partnerships, and to show you how well our employees are and can do when they reach out and develop, nurture, and attain partnerships with others. A good example of that is a partnership with the PetSmart charities. Our admin team has done a great job in bringing in some attention and money to the animal shelter. And without any further ado, I'd like to have our team, Yvonne and Nicole, come up and tell you all about it.
Good morning, Board members. Thank you, Manager Elter, for the time. Before getting into the details of this, I'd like to recognize the efforts of both Melissa Ware and Nicole Mangiamelli, our Shelter Manager. The Animal Shelter partners with PetSmart charities in the adoption of a majority of the animals that come through the shelter doors. In recognition of that partnership, we are awarded monetary grants. In FY 2019, we received over $12,000, and in FY '20, to date, we have received $3,000. This partnership affords us the opportunity to apply for additional grants from PetSmart charities, such as the adoption grant, which Nicole will go into a little bit more detail for you.
Good morning. The grant was submitted in August of 2020 and focused on three primary objectives: the spay, neuter, and vaccine of an additional 580 homeless dogs and cats to prepare them for adoption at PetSmart; number two, to broaden our reach by utilizing PetSmart charities' online tools, which will provide us with access to additional regional PetSmart partners; and number three, to bolster our volunteer and foster team, which is a critical component to accomplishing our adoption mission. On Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, we received a phone call from PetSmart charities informing us that our full grant request of $47,344 would be awarded. So this means a lot to us. That's almost 600 more cats and dogs that we can get fixed and get them up for adoption, and out of the 4,000 animals we get a year, that's a huge help to us. So I just wanted to thank you all for your support that we've had this year. It's been amazing for us, and we've already now will be getting $50,000 as of the next month. So this grant comes at a time when the pandemic has stifled our ability to conduct fundraising events and to save the lives of abandoned, neglected, and injured cats and dogs, so we are truly grateful. So we just wanted to share our excitement with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Yvonne. Thank you, Melissa. This is truly what happens when our employees act on their vision and pursue it. So the only other item I have is also related to customer service. I bring you just one as an example, but it truly is happening in every department and in every group, and this particular one was from a resident from the Golden Valley area who has contacted the Golden Valley Improvement District and worked with them, and apparently has done so on two occasions, one related to water pressure and the other related to payments and issues that occurred that held the payment. And the resident and the citizen who wrote, and I quote, "As always, your team treated me with kindness and understanding and very businesslike, and that means a lot to me. I hope it means a lot to you as well." So just, Board members, I really would like you to know what is happening. You hear a lot, and I think it's important you hear this one as well. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, and it's really nice to hear these reports at our regular meetings. Thank you to the Animal Shelter for what they do, and it's good to hear from our friends and neighbors in Golden Valley. So moving on now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following Board of Supervisors' meeting minutes before August 6th, 10th, 13th, 17th, 20th, 24th, 27th, 31st, and September 3rd, 10th, 14th, 17th, 24th, and 28th. So moved.
Clerk.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go now to the call to the public. The in-person call to the public portion of Mojave County Board of Supervisors' meeting is allowed following social distancing and CDC guidelines. However, comments can also be submitted to the clerk of the board and will be publicly read during the Board of Supervisors' meeting. Madam Clerk, do you have any email comments to read?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I do have one person that has signed up for the call to the public, Barbara Pape. Barbara Pape. She'd like to speak to us about wearing masks. So Barbara, you have three minutes. If you could give us your name and the city you're from?
Yes, Barbara Pape, at Bullhead City. I am here to give you some facts, okay? And I handed out that information regarding the testing and surveys that have been going on in JAMA, which is Journal of American Medical Association, with all the results saying there were no differences. They had taken these studies with viruses, influences, and it was from 2017 to 2019, okay? The other thing is that I was a medical assistant and x-ray tech for eight years. I worked in one of the first urgent care facilities in California. I was with doctors, three of them, and I found out that I no longer want to be a medical assistant because of what was going on behind the scenes. I noted that they were always, for the pharmaceuticals, the pharmaceuticals came up to them and paid them a percentage of pushing their product. The other issue was the fact that one of the doctors was trying to make me do an injection of morphine. You have to be licensed to give that particular drug. At that day, I was called insubordinate, and I was fired and no pay. So I do not have the best viewpoints about doctors. I'm really screening them highly. I know that this particular masking has become political, and I'm not very happy about the end results. I have information here that is causing chronic illnesses to our people. I just want to tell you, you are responsible for this particular decision-making, okay? You cannot be doing this to our people. We already have the viruses. We already have the influences in our air, but also knowing, you need to know about the results of wearing the mask. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no other speakers for the call to the public, so I will close the call to the public. And I've had a request from our sheriff, Doug Schuster, who would like to give a short presentation, I guess you could call it. He just wants to talk to us. So Sheriff Schuster, good morning, and thank you for coming.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be brief. There's a concern that continues to rear its ugly head, and I want to speak before this board today on it. Recently, at one of the Board of Supervisors' meetings, we had several citizens who wished to attend the meeting but were unwilling or unable medically to wear a mask as required inside this auditorium. And as a result, our office was called over to attempt to resolve the situation. I actually wish to thank that group of citizens for their patience and willingness to have a dialogue with our staff. There was a peaceful resolution, but questions remained unanswered. I was not available at that meeting, as I had a prior commitment, but certainly wish I'd been there. This is something that's been going on for a little bit too long now. I stood, as you know, for the people and their rights to keep their businesses open and to continue to make a living throughout the COVID pandemic. In doing so, I also repeatedly encouraged everybody to adhere to CDC guidelines and work together during these trying times. Now, this does not mean that I condone or accept the notion that people are free to do as they wish in all settings, under all circumstances. From day one, we at the sheriff's office have taken the COVID-19 virus very seriously. We encourage everyone to take personal responsibility for their own well-being and the well-being of others. Having said that, I really wish to reiterate, and I've said this many times, this virus is not a law enforcement issue. This is a public health issue. Our resources have been taxed significantly, and we are now seeing the endgame of the lockdowns, of the masks. Our suicide rates are extreme compared to where they were this time last year. Our domestic violences are extreme. Our people are not doing well under these mandates. So to the matter at hand, while the public is being compelled to wear face masks at this meeting, or at these meetings, we have members of the board who are not, and this is by no means a slight on these board members, as I fully support their right to personal choice. What it does demonstrate, however, is a distinct division amongst our individual board members, and that's okay. It does, however, in my opinion, send the wrong message to the citizens, a message of do as I say, not as I do. Now, I have a great deal of respect for all our board members. I know this unintended result is a split vote matter at hand. Nonetheless, in supporting our supervisors' rights of personal choice, I also, of course, support our citizens' right of personal choice. Therefore, I would ask the individual members of this board to immediately rescind the order requiring the public to wear masks at the open public meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sheriff Schuster. Does anyone have any questions for the sheriff?
If I could just interject at this point, I'm just going to consider that as call to the public, and that's your fine. You're right to speak to that, but I would recommend that we not have any further discussion unless, because it's not on the agenda to talk about that.
You're right, and I didn't put it on the call to the public because we couldn't ask any questions for him, but it is not agendized, so.
That's correct, and so I would recommend that we not ask any questions or take any discussion or any action on it. I would just end it at that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
But when we get to the agenda item to talk about COVID, then we can.
Well, if you can. I mean, I understand that we have an item on that, and so I'm giving that leeway. I didn't stop the sheriff. I didn't do that, and we do have an item on that. I would just recommend that we just wait to get to that point.
But we can talk about it when the time comes.
We can. We have an agenda item 56. I'm just trying to have some leeway there and things. It was a bit unusual, and so I'm just identifying where we can. I would just take the cautious approach and then wait till we get to that agenda item, at which point talk about it at that time.
Okay. Thank you for that good advice. Okay, going on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. So I will be pulling item number 48. Supervisor Watson, do you have anything to pull?
Item 27.
None this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 8 and 30.
Supervisor Johnson?
I have a question.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve items 5 through 52, with the exceptions of item number 8, 11, 27, 30, and 48. So moved.
Second motion?
Let me see. Let me go back. I said item number 11, and that was not pulled, so if we could correct that motion to approve items 5 through 52, with those numbers, I call with the exception of 11.
Okay, so my amended second.
So moved. Amended, as recognizing 8, 27, 30, and 48.
Okay, so it's items.
8, 27, 30, and 48, I believe.
That's correct. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 8, pulled by Supervisor Gold. Approve the intergovernmental agreement for Title V Material and Child Healthy Arizona Families. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, in the backup, I saw something about pregnancy testing in this grant.
Supervisor Gould, yes. I actually have Lynn Valentine here also, who can also help respond to questions. So was there something specific that you?
Well, I'm curious, are we doing abortion referrals if we're doing pregnancy testing?
Let me have Lynn answer that question for you.
We do not do abortion referrals. What we do provide is a comprehensive list of available services in our area, including pregnancy crisis centers, obviously additional healthcare. There is information about abortion services, which we don't have in Mojave County, but just the list is provided. No counseling or referrals are made to the individual.
Can I get a copy of that list?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move item 8 be adopted.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next item, 27, this was pulled by Supervisor Watson. Approve the multi-award and signed contracts 20-B-16. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a question as to why Desert Construction, which is usually in these quotes, is not for approval today? Just a clarification.
Good morning, Supervisor Watson and members of the board. The solicitation process was offered to several bidders, potential bidders, and this time around, Desert Construction did not respond to the bid.
But they were notified?
They did not submit a bid on time.
So did they submit a bid that wasn't on time?
It wasn't submitted at all.
Oh, no submission?
Correct.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve item number 27.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to item number 30, this was pulled by Supervisor Gould. Approve and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the Board of Supervisors a 25-year license agreement for a privately operated electrical system to supply power to Walupi Valley Farm located in North Kingman. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm curious why we're a party to this. It seems like it would be a deal between the utility company and the farm.
Okay, Mr. Lakowski is at the podium, and I'm sure he can answer that question.
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, Supervisors, and Supervisor Gould. The Walupi Valley Farm has approached the county as far as it relates to situating their service line, their electrical service line, in county rights away. And as a result, the license approach is being offered to Walupi Valley Farms for placing their private infrastructure in county rights away. And the infrastructure for electrical service is simply to benefit them. It does provide no utility, no sale of electricity per se to any public, so hence, there's no franchise involved, but we're doing a 10-year license.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to also add that this will also enhance the ability for those services to be increased in the Valley Vista area. It's a benefit to not only the applicant, but also through Mojave Electric Co-op into the Valley Vista area. So it's a great benefit, that area. It's in my district. So with that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Madam Chairman, it seems like if we're going to supply power from somebody other than that farm itself, wouldn't the franchise fee apply?
Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Gould, it has been represented to us by Walupi Mountain Farm that this infrastructure would only be serving the farm property specific, those properties owned by Walupi Mountain Farm.
Okay. If they were then to extend, I don't know, maybe that just puts the power in that area so that Mojave Electric could distribute it more?
It's plausible, and it would not be party to the license that Mojave Electric is teaming with Walupi Valley Farms to build out certain infrastructure, but this is just a situation, a service line to the farm itself. But potentially, there's other infrastructure being built out in the area, which would be great for the area.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next item was pulled by myself. Speed to approve the reappointment of Cheryl Smith to Smith, the Moby County Employee Merit Commission representing supervisory district four, term effective December 4th, 2020, expiring December 4th, 2021. I would like to change the expiration date to the year 2022. So, with that, I'll make a motion to make that change.
Second motion.
Have a motion in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go now to the regular agenda. Item number 53, speed a discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 202146, that Granville Road from Balsa Drive to Char Drive, a distance total of .50 miles, be accepted into the Mojave County Regular Maintenance Program as an on-surface road in the Golden Valley area. So, this is in my district, and I do recommend approval. So, I'll make that in the form of a motion that we approve, item 53 is written.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item 54, it's a discussion, possible action to approve reclassification of the vacant position number 975 Crew Leader at Range 17 to Road Maintenance Supervisor at Range 19 for purposes of directing all aspects of county road maintenance operations throughout the Arizona Strip.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Watson?
This is representative of my district and the area that is north of the Grand Canyon. Like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 55, discussion of possible action, re-approve the settlement agreement between Transwestern Pipeline Company LLC in Mojave County for the overpayment of property taxes for years 2016 through 2021, and authorize the chairman to sign the settlement agreement and any associated documents. Further, approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement for repayment of taxes with any districts unable to immediately repay the county their proportionate share of the tax refund, with the understanding that the treasurer will negotiate the final terms of the repayment with these districts. Once the terms are finalized, authorize the treasurer and chairman to sign the IGAs on behalf of Mojave County. So moved. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Angus, seconded by Supervisor Gould. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The last and final item on the agenda, this will be a discussion of possible action, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon the updates. So, we have our Public Health Director come into the podium, Ms. Denise Burley.
Good morning, Denise. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll start off as usual, we have currently 4,063 cases, average age of case is 47.6, we have 218 deaths, average age of deaths is 75.8. We did have a slight increase in diagnosed cases, ending week of 1017, 65 cases, the previous week ended at 54 cases, again, a slight increase, but definitely in the direction that we don't want to go. We have had 1.9% of our population has ever had COVID PCR testing positive results so far, so. In our hospital data, we don't see any significant trends there as well in terms of hospitalizations or any kind of concerns with ICU bed use or ventilators, so we're doing well there as well. So, I recognize that there have been a number of questions regarding masks recently, and I think this has been ongoing. And I know that there are multiple studies which point in both directions here. And as you all know, with a new virus, with anything new, it takes time to do research, it takes time to do, to take the necessary steps to really identify and understand what preventive measures we're going, will work best in ensuring that we can minimize the impact of the virus on our community. I understand that, you know, in looking at this data, it's hard to discern what's real, what's not, and how much this, how much research has been vetted through this process to ensure accuracy and reliability in the results. We'll continue to recommend the use of masks as a preventive tool, in addition to physical distancing, as we see these as our two best ways to bring our economy back to its normal state and bring it back up to speed, basically, in more definitive terms. But we also see this as a way to prevent the spread of the virus in our community, and more to the spread to those who are unable to fight the infection or have underlying health conditions are more vulnerable. And that's our community responsibility, is to ensure that we provide these recommendations, to ensure that we're using science as our base, and to ensure that we're providing the most accurate information that we can from that point of view. So, at this point, I don't have any additional updates or information to share, but I want to be open to questions, so if any of you have any.
Does anyone have any questions, Denise?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, does the county health department track suicides?
I do know that we can get some information on suicides, so let me look into what that looks like and try to get as much data as I can for you.
Sheriff, you can get us like the last five years.
Okay, I will see what I can do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
Okay, we heard from the sheriff about his recommendation, and when we talked about it at last meeting, and I made a motion to rescind the masks in the building, when the sheriff spoke, he spoke about during open meetings in the auditorium. So, I'm going to, I'm going to ask it again, I'm going to make a motion that we rescind the mask mandate for the auditorium during public meetings. That doesn't mean that if people want to wear masks, they can't wear masks, we're still social distancing, we're still sitting apart, it's just rescinding the masks for our public meetings in this auditorium.
Second.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask Attorney Esplin, this motion is being made by people on the losing side, but the last vote to do away with masks, is it changed enough where they can make a motion, or has most had to be made by somebody on the winning side?
Supervisor Johnson, you pose an excellent question and something that I did consider, and I believe that this is sufficiently different than what was proposed before that they could do that. If the motion was to lift the mask mandate for the county buildings, then it would be, it would have to be somebody from the opposing side, but for this one, this is sufficiently different that Supervisor Angus could make this motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ryan, is there a time limit on making the same motion?
No, and, you know, we had a discussion about this a couple of years ago, I don't know if you were on the board at the time, and I may have just been talking to individual board members, but, but really, there's nothing in Arizona revised statutes about reconsidering motions or things like that, there's not. It's a practice of the board, it's a function of the board, there's nothing in the Arizona revised statutes about following Robert's Rules of Order, there's nothing. But it's a function of the board, and the board has historically followed those patterns. And the board has adopted its rules of procedure, and in its rules of procedure, that's what it talks about, is when you can reconsider things and who can reconsider stuff. And so, that's what we're following here, is the board's own rules in terms of reconsideration. In terms of a time limit, I don't think we do, but I'd have to check when that time limit expires, I don't, I don't know if the rules have it, I'd have to look.
Thank you.
But the rules do specifically say it has to be from the opposing.
It would seem that there would be some time limit on it, because following election, it would be a new Board of Supervisors, at least.
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, in Robert's Rules of Order, it talks about each general assembly, so you can reconsider within that general assembly, that particular legislative session, so to speak, right? And then you would wait to the next one. But it's kind of weird here, because we meet every two, twice every month, it's not like the state legislature, where the state legislature meets, you know, for special, meets regular session, you know, once every year, every two, is it once every year they meet?
It's every year.
Yeah, every year. So, then, you know, once the session's done, you'd have to wait until the next one to come around.
Sure, and since we go around and around and around.
Yeah, so.
Seems like a time, maybe if we don't have a time limit, that might be something that we might want to take a look at.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, or Supervisor Watson has been to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of our agreement to have our presentation this afternoon at 1:30, we did assure the US Geological Survey that those representatives would be protected by the measures that we've adopted, and had we not done that, then we would be looking at a Zoom meeting and not a personal presentation, so that's the importance of this afternoon's requirement, if you so want to look at it that way. But we are having a special meeting on Thursday to address it again, so that's my comment.
Okay, yeah, personally, I would rather discuss this on Thursday, but I do have a question of Denise, this virus is microscopically small enough to fit through a cloth mask, is my understanding, but the way that the virus moves is on droplets from breathing or talking or coughing, and those droplets cannot get through a cloth mask, is that correct? Do you have the same understanding?
Yes.
And is that what the experts are saying?
Yes, I mean, it's passed through respiratory droplets primarily, and the masks do prevent the spread of those respiratory droplets from person to person, both through distancing and also through the mask itself. And it's not a perfect, I mean, I think we've talked about the fact that there are other individuals who have maybe been around, sick individuals who have become sick, and there's a variety of reasons for that. It could be the quality of that mask, being very thin, it could be the proximity of that person to a sick person, and the time that person has spent around that person in conversation or, or other activities. But generally speaking, the respiratory droplets are your primary mode of transmission, and the masks do work to prevent most of those from coming through to other people and sharing.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair? Supervisor Angus?
For purposes of this room, these meetings, we are, we are social distanced. I mean, the chances of you, and you're going to wear a mask, right?
Correct.
I believe most people will wear a mask when they come in here. I do, but for the people who can and won't, that's all we're talking about. We are distanced, the, you know, we go, we all go out to dinner, right? We walk in restaurants, you have to have your mask, you sit down, you take your mask off. You're eating, you're eating around people, you're touching things, I mean, we're in, we're in October, we're not back in March.
Correct.
So, I think this is a very fair compromise for the protection of the employees and for the people who want to address their elected board about things and can't wear masks when they come in. So, that's why I made my motion. But I have one more item for Ryan. Ryan, didn't you once tell me that since, like what I did last time, it wasn't an agenda item? Like, it wasn't we were reconsidering an agenda item? You said that I could make a motion, you know, a similar motion anytime, because we're not reconsidering it.
I may have said that, and if I have, I apologize, I've changed my mind, or so to speak, I mean, I probably have, and I do, but I would say that was such a specific item, and you're going through the same thing, that I would say that we need to follow what our rules of orders are. And I realize that I am going, I am backtracking, but I think Supervisor Johnson is correct that, I mean, if there's a specific, specific motion, and then we're going back and reconsidering it, I mean, I think we should reconsider it. What you did today was sufficiently different that it would allow it. But like, take for example Supervisor Watson, there was the, there was a motion about the gyms, that was not on an agenda item, that was something that was just made as part of, part of this regular, one that we bring, this COVID item. So, then Supervisor Watson then did a reconsideration of it, he asked to reconsider it, and then the board voted, it was reconsidered, and then it was done. So, I think we're really following that precedent is what we're doing. Do you remember that gym one, because it was specifically reconsidered, even though it was not an item that was on the agenda? And so, I think that is a better practice.
Okay, and I'd like to remind everybody that we did send out a news release to the public that we would be having this Thursday workshop, so that people could come in and discuss COVID and the mask, and on both sides of the issue, because there are two sides. I mean, it's, it's obvious with this board, we're a split board, and our citizens are a split population as well, so we've given them the opportunity to come in next Thursday, and I think we should respect that, and the people that have sent in emails and that are planning to come to speak at that meeting should be allowed to speak.
Well, Madam Chair, how about the people who can't wear masks and who won't be allowed to come in and speak?
They'll be able to send in their email comments.
Well, okay, well, I have, there's a motion I made, and I'm continuing with that motion.
And we're still under discussion, is there anyone else that would like to say?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Supervisor Angus may want to add an effective date of her motion to tomorrow.
Right, because of today's commitment, right? Okay, so I will amend my motion to rescind the mask mandate in this board auditorium for public meetings, beginning tomorrow, October 20th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Watson? Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
And Chairman Bishop?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Denise, do you have anything additional?
I do not.
Okay, let's see.
I have a question for her.
Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Denise, any word on the vitamins and supplements?
Thank you so much, Supervisor Gould. Actually, one of my staff put together a spreadsheet that I will pass along to all of you as soon as I leave this meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for reminding me of that, she took care of that on Friday, actually, so.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This meeting is adjourned.
Supervisor Johnson?
Has left the conference.